Tonight's event and the rest of our Future of Housing Candidate Forum series with Wine Country Young Democrats. Wine Country Young Democrats' primary purpose is to promote civic engagement, make politics accessible to all community members, and empower the young vote. The Wine Country Young Democrats will encourage, educate, and elect young voters. We're grateful for the opportunity to bring together two organizations really committed to the future of housing, the subject of tonight's event, and the remainder of our candidate forum series. As we withstand wildfires and an enduring pandemic in our county, understanding housing as an integral part of our future is in the spirit of both our organizations and an important issue for voters to see prioritized for local leadership. So to review our schedule for this evening, we'll have opening remarks by our candidates, a moderated discussion, audience Q and A. So once again, please comment through the presentation and up both questions you like, and closing remarks from the candidates before our executive director Jen Close closes out. So I'd like to introduce the candidates who are joining us tonight. From District One, we have Willie Lenares. Three, we have Gerard Judice. From District Four, Jake McKenzie. And also from District Four, Jackie Elward. So next, the candidates will offer their opening remarks. We'll start with Willie, and then Gerard, Jake, and Jackie. Each candidate will have a maximum of two minutes to offer their opening statements. You're muted. Willie?
There we go. Bingo. Thank you for having me. My name is Willie Lenares, and I'm your candidate for District One in Runner Park. The reason I'm running is pretty simple, is because representation matters. The new district mapping allows us to have a seat at the table and have a voice for historic A and B section. City Council should reflect its constituents, and currently, it does not. The forty-three percent of BIPOC people in this community are not being represented. It's time that we have a seat at the table. I'm fit for this position because of my education, my work experience, and my dedication to the community. I proudly hold an AA degree from Santa Rosa Junior College, a bachelor's degree from Sacramento State, a master's degree from University of San Francisco, and a Master of Business Administration degree from Ashford University. I have dedicated the last five years of my life as serving a board member for Hannah Boyne Center. I've also served on their Youth Services Committee, both as a trustee and as a regent board member. I have made decisions that benefit and affect a multimillion-dollar organization. For those reasons, I believe that you should vote for me on November 3rd. If you want an equitable and an inclusive city, then I deserve that vote. I want to bring that to Runner Park. I want to represent newcomers, lifelong residents, our unhoused, all people of Runner Park, not just certain groups. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie. Gerard?
Well, thank you, Luke, and thanks to Jen, and thanks to Jesus Guzman and everyone over at Generation Housing for this opportunity. Second, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to honor the firefighters and the first responders working under extraordinary circumstances to keep everyone safe and protect animals and property as well. What makes Runner Park the place I love is our people. They're incredible. What makes it all the more important that our city leaders reflect our values, act with unquestionable integrity, plan long-term, and support every single member of our community. As the co-owner of a popular event center restaurant and catering company, I understand the challenges faced by Runner Park families and businesses right now. Access to affordable housing, in particular with supportive services such as transportation, access to healthcare, living wage jobs, climate change are issues that continue to challenge not only the service industry that I'm in, but our working town. This moment requires steady, experienced leadership, willing to listen and earnestly engage in respectful dialogue, and those who will prioritize the health and welfare of every Runner Park and family and neighborhood without leaving anyone behind. I believe trust and leadership is earned. That's how I've run my business, and that's the quality and the commitment that I'll take to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. Jake?
Hi. We find ourselves in an interesting time at this election season, and that is, the housing crisis continues in this state, it continues in this region, it continues in this county. And we in Runner Park have been building houses. It may come as a surprise to people, but over the last four years, we've built over five hundred single-family housing units and over six hundred multiple-family units. We've also been using our inclusionary housing ordinance, development agreements, and other agreements with developers to provide affordable housing at the low and very low income. Our problem at the moment, and this is a housing discussion as I understand it, our problem is the missing middle. So what do we need to do? We need to update our general plan, which is on schedule for next year. Our housing element is still up to date, but we will start revising that next year towards meeting the new Regional Housing Need Assessment numbers, which will be coming out in the year 2021. So the newly-elected council is going to have a big job in its hands to make sure that we continue the progress through a general plan, through specific plans, through development agreements, because cities don't actually build houses. Developers, master builders, individual contractors, and nonprofits actually construct things and construct houses. So I've been doing this for a while now. I was one of the authors of the general plan we're implementing, and I am happily looking forward to implementing the second general plan.
Thank you, Jake. Jackie?
Hello. As I will clearly relate to what Willie said, representation is one of the things that the BIPOC population is seeking right now, because we cannot continue the way we've been doing for thirty years and continue this. Like my late father would say, and I will honor him tonight, standing strong and fighting for representation. It is something that is needed. We are talking about housing, but we know that the people that are the most hurt are the one living in poverty and are the one in the BIPOC population. I can relate to them, because I went through in my lifetime to affordable housing, and I understand how that works. And tonight, I will say, our city of Runner Park needs representation more than ever. Today is the time for us to stand and fight for it. And my background, I am studying criminal justice and sociology. Why? Because I understand that that is the area that people need to understand the most. So for our people today, like my late father will say, you need to stand up strong to fight for those in need, and that's what I'm gonna do today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you to all the candidates for your opening statements. Now we'll move into the moderated discussion. We've randomized the speaking order, so everyone will have a chance to go first and last. Our first question is on housing production. What are the greatest barriers to housing production in Runner Park? What do you plan to do to overcome these barriers? Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. We'll start with Gerard, followed by Jackie, Jake, and Willie. Once again, the question, what are the greatest barriers to housing production in Runner Park? And what do you plan to do to help overcome these barriers? Gerard? Thank you.
Well, Runner Park is a dynamic environment, and although it has some similar situations to other cities, we're unique. We're unique in the fact that we're a college town, so that's the first barrier, and that's the first challenge to overcome. The college has lots of surplus land that they're not using currently on the college campus. And what can we do to work regionally, not only with the county, but with the state, and find ways to build affordable housing on campus? The impact of students in some of our sections is well documented, and really, the greatest opportunity we have is to work with the university to build more affordable housing for our young folks. The second challenge is how do we restart the downtown, right? With three hundred and eighty units slated workforce housing at that site adjacent to the Smart Rail right along the 101 corridor, that's our second greatest opportunity and second greatest challenge. So what can we do and think outside the box to restart that development? Is TOT tax on the table? Can we talk about the possibility of phasing that development a little bit differently so that those housing products can get started? So that would be the second. The third, and really a minor part, is that, as some of the others have pointed out, the bulk of development in Runner Park is slated in specific plans, and these plans have a development agreement. So making sure that we hold those developers accountable for those goals is really important. And finally, as was also pointed out, using our inclusionary housing money to keep those entitlements in place with some of those properties that it's about to sunset or about to expire. What can we do to work with those developers and those property owners to make sure those entitlements stay in place?
All right. Thank you. Jackie?
So like Gerard said, Runner Park is really unique, and we have a lot of developing housing, affordable housing happening as we speak. But the one thing that will be a challenge is that we know for a fact that the current city council hasn't been able to really connect with the Sonoma State University, like Gerard said. We need to have those conversations going, because they have room that we can build affordable homes for the student that can be a part of our community. The second thing will be, like Gerard said again, in 2018, when we ran, everybody was raving over the downtown. And we know that by having the downtown, we will have homes and we will have businesses coming into our town. We are facing right now fires, we are facing COVID, we are facing a lot of things. And we need to figure that, because home housing is a human need and human right. So we have to do whatever we can to not only have everybody sit down and understand, instead of talking big numbers, we have to come down to reality, to face it, to understand that right now, we are talking about people, we are talking about families, we are talking about the people that are gonna be contributing to the future of our town. So if we're gonna be continuing to talk about the way we have been talking, things are not gonna work. So we need to sit down and think about what has not worked for twenty-five years, or twenty-five, or thirty years, to put it together to really realize that right now, it's time to really realize that housing is a human right.
Thank you, Jackie. Jake?
Yeah. To say that nothing has been done over the last twenty-five years is really not acceptable. We are, in fact, and have been building affordable housing. As I stated earlier, we have been building housing in general. We have been building more housing than any other city in Sonoma County. Secondly, the downtown project is a project which is owned by a developer. And guess what the developer got caught up with over the last two years? A perfect storm of two major fires, and now of COVID, a change in the whole structure of the retail industry, and an inability to get financing for the project. And we do have a development agreement with Lualima Corporation, and we will get back to the table with them. And it's definitely a need to relook at the housing situation and the phasing of that project, I would agree. We also, and I know Gerard can't speak about it as specifically as he might like, but we also have Sonoma Mountain Village in the wings with an allocation of affordable housing when the village part of Sonoma is built. We're recognized by the North Bay Builders Exchange as the most friendly city in Sonoma County in terms of getting houses built. And so I would say we've done a great job of removing the barriers that the question asked about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Willie?
Yeah, thank you for that question. As Jake alluded to, Runner Park does have the most affordable housing in Sonoma County. So I think on that part, we can say that, but we have to look at this holistically. We are looking at unprecedented times that are coming our way. We've already seen that the budget's been cut by seven to eight million dollars. We know this pandemic is gonna continue to affect how we operate. So I do believe that housing has been a priority for the city of Runner Park. The way we need to look at this is, well, the barrier that you asked about is financing, and that's gonna be related to the downtown and any project that comes up. We've had these fires, and we've had the pandemic, which is gonna affect everything. What we need to do is, as Gerard alluded to, is our county, our state, and organizations like Jen Housing, and we need to be creative. We need to figure out how we use tax credits, the four percent tax credit, the nine percent tax credit, to work with other partners to make these come to fruition. We must promote affordability and also have to think about transit-oriented housing, not just housing anywhere. We have to make sure that our infrastructure is set up properly, so people can get from place to place. I know that the Smart Train was trying to figure out, how do we get people of color to use our system? Well, are they able to access it? Are they able to afford it? It's the same thing with housing. So the benefits of housing overall are gonna be beyond just the four walls. We're gonna have education, health, and economic activity, all included in being able to build more housing. Thank you.
Thank you all. We'll now move on to a question on housing in relation to COVID-19 recovery efforts. So COVID-19 has created grave challenges for renters and landlords alike who are trying to make ends meet. The pandemic has exacerbated deep and longstanding racial inequities, and recent federal orders and state legislation have enacted temporary eviction moratoriums, but many are still struggling with uncertainty about their future. How would you make sure to help tenants and landlords impacted by COVID-19? And how would you do that, keeping in mind the disproportionate impact of the crisis on people of color? Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. We'll start with Jake, followed by Jackie, Willie, and Gerard.
Clearly, this is the, what one would probably say is the tip of the iceberg. I frankly do not know that the California State Legislature resolved this problem. They may have resolved it temporarily, as you said. The federal government may have resolved it temporarily. In terms of how the city of Runner Park might deal with it, I'd actually be very interested in hearing a legislative suggestion to come in front of the new council when it's seated in December. I think in the short term, the state and federal measures will be helpful. That's my answer.
Okay. Thank you. Jackie?
I would say that as a city, I know that sometime we look up to the people above to kind of like figure out what we're doing. But as of now, we need to step up for our people. We know for a fact that Latinos have the lowest homeownership rate of minority in Sonoma County. That is a no-brainer. Minorities are the most affected from COVID right now, as we speak. More than seven to ten black homes are rent-compromised. In Runner Park, we need not to not just see it being a single-home city, but a city where we can do housing differently. Yes, we have those, but how can we implement it? Because COVID-19 made things worse and made housing more urgent. And one hundred unit affordable housing project can create eighty jobs. So this pandemic don't only stop here. We don't have to wait for those above. We need to be creative with the people that we have and what is urgent for our people right now, because we know where are the areas that are more targeted and more vulnerable as we speak. So for me, I will say, we need to go out there, and we need to really start to speak to the people, and we have numbers, we have everything. We don't need to be waiting for the federal government. We need to start ourself here, and then hopefully propose to them. And but we need to start with our own resources that we have here in our county.
Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think one big part of this is, has to do with how COVID-19 is disproportionately affecting people of color. At one point, it was up to seventy percent of the people affected were Latino. And so we see these issues continuing to affect different issues, housing issues, homelessness, all these different issues affecting people of color, minorities. And so it's a conversation that we need to have for everybody, but we do have to keep in mind that it's affecting some groups more than others. And so these issues need to be dealt with right now. I think, you know, I know we're talking about when the new council comes and all that, but these issues are gonna continue. As Jake alluded to, this is just the tip of the iceberg. And so I think that we need to do, as I have made it my own mission in my own campaign, is reaching our constituents directly within our communities and finding out what the true issues are. I think many times, we blanket what the problem is, and we blanket what the solution is without truly knowing if those solutions are gonna work for all of our residents. And many times, they probably don't reach all the people that could benefit from that. And we have seen that with lack of resources that reach, well, there's plenty of resources and programs, but they're not reaching the right people, just like voter registration information. I've had people tell me they don't know how to register, they've never registered, and there's programs that exist for that. So relating to COVID-19, I think we need to do outreach to start figuring out what the real problems are and to all people of how they're being affected when it comes to housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard?
Thank you. So, you know, the city of Runner Park put out a survey several months ago, and I was shocked to learn that almost thirty percent of the respondents said they were going to struggle to make their recent utility bill. You know, the conditions that exist in Runner Park have been exacerbated, of course, by COVID and the fires, but the underlying issue has always been there, and it's clearly spelled out in the general plan under the section of Environmental Justice with regards to our disadvantaged communities. And it clearly calls for the council to take action under SB 1000 and try to mitigate some of those impacts. The district that Willie is attempting to represent A and B sections, that entire community is a disadvantaged community. The entire west side of Runner Park is a disadvantaged community. So what are we doing to take the deep dive and actually interviewing and reaching out to those individuals? You know, a budget as a city plans is a statement of your values. So taking a look at those values and seeing where our money should be spent in terms of either community foundation monies or budgeted monies for improvements, and really taking a look at how we empower and assist those residents and those businesses, especially those minority businesses, get through the other side. Runner Park is a working person's town, okay? This is not Healdsburg. So we really need to take a hard look and communicate with our residents and make sure that our values, our budget values are in line with our intent. A rising tide lifts all boats, and that hasn't always been the case here in Runner Park. So I think to resolve and mitigate this issue, obviously, Runner Park is incumbent on Runner Park to act not only in concert with the county and with the state, but also take the deep dive into our disadvantaged communities and take action.
Thank you all. Before we dive into our next question, I just want to remind everyone participating, watching right now, please, again, feel free to add your questions in the Q and A function. But for now, another question from the moderated portion on homelessness. So the Board of Supervisors are moving forward with a plan to address homelessness countywide by establishing a navigation center in each district. How do you envision Runner Park collaborating with the county to address the growing issue of homelessness? We'll start with Willie, and then Gerard, Jake, and Jackie.
Great. Thank you for that question. Yeah, I know from being out in the community that homelessness is a big topic for a lot of people. I know that people within my own district are concerned about B-section park, where we have RVs being parked there, people hanging out there, potentially, you know, doing illegal activity. I understand their concerns. One thing that I came across and do in my research is, you know, city council banned the RVs and cars from parking overnight in city lots. So, which is fine if that's one thing that they wanted to do, but what is the solution to that? We cannot just continue to kick the can and move people from place to place. We really have to truly come up with a solution. So navigating, a navigation center and working with the county, I think we truly need to invest in those issues, not checking a box, not saying, yeah, we'll do it, now we're gonna put money towards it, but really working with groups like the Homelessness Action Group and those types of groups to find out what can we do? How can we get people into housing using the Housing First model? Not giving them temporarily, not giving them certain rules when they have to park their car and leave. If your vehicle doesn't work, you can't park here. That doesn't solve anything. We have to get people into housing. So that's, I think, how I would work with the county, is really diving in and trying to find real solutions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So it looks like we have Dave Solvagini joining us as well. Dave, if you can hear us, I can add you on at the end of this round of questioning and bring you into the process here. But for now, let's move on in the order we were going with Gerard.
Okay. So thank you. And in serving on the Board of Social Advocates for Youth with Lisa Fatu and our outreach team, I think SAY has had a very good model in terms of street outreach, and then getting those individuals into shelters, and then providing the wraparound services. Certainly, the city of Runner Park can do a lot more to follow that model. And as I mentioned before, a budget is a statement of our values. So what is it that we do value? These are unhoused persons living in our community. So recognition of that is the first step. And the second step, obviously, is to have an aggressive outreach program with mental health professionals that are going into the encampments that we do have and trying to extract those individuals and to provide them with the services, in particular, the mental health services that Willie mentioned, and get them into safe, nurturing environments. Having said that, while we're going through that process, we can certainly do it with a little bit more dignity. A while back, Runner Park was offered a sanitizing station from a nonprofit, which name eludes me, and it was turned down, and for the life of me, I can't understand why. In addition, I can't understand why we shouldn't have some porta-potty services there, and yet we are going to allow our city employees to go in and to remove biohazard. So I think that while we're going through this process, we can do it with a lot more compassion. And I think that the city could participate more, in particular with the five churches that are providing food for our unhoused population. So recognizing that we have an issue, accepting our responsibility as a city, and then being proactive to conquer that, I think, obviously, are the keys.
Thank you, Gerard. Jake?
Yeah. I spent an interesting two hours this afternoon on the monthly homelessness roundtable, which has been pulled together by the city of Runner Park, which involves some of the SAY on-the-street people who were there tonight in attendance. Also were present and were briefing us was Catholic Charities, with whom we have a new contract to provide outreach services. They just, in fact, obtained shelter for three homeless people from the streets of Runner Park in the past week. To say that the city has been doing nothing is just not true. I will also say that what Gerard was mentioning is something that I have concerns about as well, and that is the provision of sanitary facilities. The mayor and council member Adams formed an Ad Hope Council Committee at the beginning of this year. They have been reporting back to us. Catholic Charities, as I said, is now doing outreach. We did not renew our contract with COTS, and I think that we are on our way to turning things around. You should also be aware that there needs to be a resolution at the county level and the city level of the distribution of state monies. At the moment, At the moment, there are organizational problems which are being thrashed out. And I believe that we will be in a better position to provide resources. And incidentally, the churches were represented and are represented at this housing roundtable along with the individuals who are providing food. And I know that Gerard, you and your operation have been very helpful in providing provisions to this group of people who, again, we meet monthly, Susan Adams and myself represent the council. And to say that we're doing nothing, we're not doing nothing, we're not doing enough.
Thank you. Jackie?
I will, I will say this. We all need to get rid of that NIMBY attitude in our area, you know. You know, yes, I want to keep property values of a homeowner. But at the same time, we need to find a balance to make sure that we have people housed. Unhoused people on the street, we take values down as well. Everything is connected, you know. Housing is an investment in the future of our community. Housing and public health are all connected. I mean, I will say, in Rona Park, yes, we are trying to find things to do to help. But we don't have a place where people can go, our unhoused people, because I don't like to say homeless. It's a little bit harsh. Because these, these are the people that contribute to our economy, and I have to give them a little dignity. So in here in Rona Park, we don't have anything set or put in place to help the unhoused population that we have. We either we send them to Santa Rosa or Petaluma. Here in town, we don't have anything. And I, it would be great to have something here and actually start treating our own people with dignity the way they deserve it. And I would say also that, as a homeowner, I know we have that that thought of thinking, what we're going to do if they start living on a creek behind our house? Well, guess what? The environment will be trashed. Everything will be trashed because people need to be taken care of. So we can say as much as we want, but again, at the end of the day, we are talking about human beings, people that contribute to our economy. And for me, I think everything is connected and we need to start thinking about it now.
Thank you. Up next, Dave Solvini, candidate for District One. I'll just read the question again, since you're just joining us. If you could please unmute yourself. How do you envision Rona Park collaborating with the county to address the growing issue of homelessness?
One of my big things with the homeless is a lot of it is mental illness, drug addiction, alcoholism. Some people are just down on their luck that need a helping hand. I think the city's been doing a good job working with the churches. It's been a big plus to have, you bring in the churches because they have a little more compassion than and understanding towards what's going on than most normal people, not normal, you know what I mean, laypeople. But I think that would be our biggest thing, getting, getting the homeless involved, making them feel worthy again. Because that's what it really takes. If you ever spend some time with people and just go out and talk to them, you know, they're down on their luck. They may, you know, some are honest, I just drink, but they need that help. I'd like to see showers, you know, come around once every, you know, week, so they can take a nice hot shower. It's a big, it's a big situation. And, you know, Jackie was saying, yeah, it brings the property value down, but we can't just keep pushing people somewhere else. Sooner or later, we have to take care of the people that are here. We have to make them a priority. That's one thing that, I mean, it hits me really hard because in the areas I work, I see a lot of homeless. And it's very easy to go, please get them out, please get them out. But they have to go somewhere. You can't just push them to somebody else's backyard. So that would be my biggest thing is try to find a spot for them, make them feel worthy again. That's all.
Thank you. We'll now move to a moderated question from our co-host and partner for tonight's event, Wine Country Young Democrats. And each candidate will have two minutes to respond.
Good evening to our fellow Rona Park City Council candidates. I'd like to thank you for being a part of this forum series, co-hosted by the Wine Country Young Democrats and Generation Housing. I'm Elizabeth Escalante and president of the Wine Country Young Democrats. And we're very pleased to be co-hosting this forum series alongside Generation H. My question for you this evening is as follows. The development process in California can be very complex. It can take years to get some projects approved. And state legislation in recent years has sought to expedite and streamline the approval process. Would you streamline the development process? And how would you do that? Thank you.
Thank you to Elizabeth for the question. We'll start with Jackie, followed by Dave, Willie, Gerard, and Jake.
So I always have to keep in mind that, as a union person, I have to make our community accessible to our young people. And forgive me if I don't really get the correct answer to this, but for me, I would say that the city council need or the city need to start thinking outside the box. Because right now, with everything going on, things will be dragged. And we can see it for running, we see everything is pushed back, pushed back. But when we're talking about human being, when we're talking about people that contribute to to our city economy, we need to step out of the box and really take drastic measures that will either go outside what the federal government is doing or the legislation people are doing. And really, to really think first, what is the best for our constituent? I don't have a problem really stepping outside of the box and doing something that is unprecedented in order to have our constituent, our people, to be housed and be placed in places that will give them dignity and then taken away from them. That, for me, will be my priority. And I know that with this unprecedented time, we will have to really make those decisions that will be for the best. And that's how I will, I will, I will see it.
Thank you, Jackie. Dave?
So regarding streamlining the process, I think it would take talking with the city manager and staff to find out exactly what they can do to speed up the process. I myself am not an engineer, so I don't, I couldn't tell you. But I would find out the right answer. You know, if people come to me and say, how do we streamline? You go to the source. You go to the source and find out the exact information so everybody has it. If the city can speed it up, especially now, I think they would speed it up. Look at what they've done with the Station Avenue. You know, the sewer's in, the water's in, just waiting for the development, you know. So they are streamlining to that effect. So I can't see the city not trying to go above and beyond for any kind of good project if it makes sense to the city. It would have to make sense to the city first. And then, you know, I can't see them not saying, well, let's streamline it, let's get it in faster. Because for a long time, building permits and everything else took a long time. If you ever tried to get something done in any city, it takes a while. But now that, you know, we need business, we need people working, I can't see the city, you know, turning a blind eye to money. So.
Thank you. Willie? Oh, Willie, you're muted.
Thank you for that question. I think the question is, would you streamline the process? I would say, yes, you streamline it when appropriate, if appropriate. You look at all solutions. So I said this earlier about housing, you need to be creative. We have to think creative. Again, we're living through some unprecedented times and unprecedented problems, and it calls for unprecedented solutions. So as if it's not the regular process of what we traditionally do, well, we need to look at this because this is not traditional. We need to look at what other jurisdictions do. What are other cities doing about zoning? What are they doing about tax credits? Or what are they doing about streamlining? So I believe that we can look at best practices to be able to make decisions what's best for our city. With that said, we need to maintain the integrity of what our mission is to our strategic plan. And we need to make sure that we keep our affordable housing on the plan still. Just because you streamline something doesn't mean that you sell yourself to whoever's willing to come and build or willing to do it quickly. I think we have to, we must maintain the integrity to the strategic plan as we have been doing. As Jake said, we've built a lot of housing, more housing than any other city in Sonoma County. So I think the will to do so is there. So why not look at all possible solutions? Thank you.
Thank you. Gerard?
You know, I think the greatest tool that we have, and this is a land use issue, obviously. The greatest tool that that we have and that, as Chair of the Planning Commission, we unfolded with the downtown area was the notion of a planned development. And I think with a planned development, you're basically giving the developer the playbook where they can point and click. And concurrent with approving the downtown plan, we also approve the design review. And the same thing also happened at Sommo Village as well. So using that planned development concept as a tool to streamline the process not only gets us what we want in terms of affordable housing and land use codes, but it really puts the onus on the developer to then go ahead and bring us, you know, the product that we need. We do need to take a good, deeper look at the last remaining land that we do have. And in some situations, I think, taking the industrial land that we have on the west side of town like we have done with the Press Democrat site and allowing affordable or workforce housing to go in into those areas is is really significant and is important. In addition, a lot of our largest shopping areas, including the one that is the original shopping center on the southwest of Boulevard there, is zoned mixed use. So what can we do and how can we work with those property owners to streamline that process and get a really nice mixed use project that will not only benefit the residents of the area, but address affordable housing? So I think planned developments, I think, taking a look at our industrial land, I think, taking a look at our opportunities for mixed use development, especially where it makes sense, close to transit. I think all of those processes can be streamlined and we can benefit from it.
Thank you. Jake?
I hate to tell you guys, but we streamlined the processes, the creation of the Department of Development Services. And as I said earlier, we're recognized by the building industry in Sonoma County as the most streamlined and most efficient and most business-friendly operation in the county of Sonoma. So that's answer number one. Answer number two, financing problems. The reason that downtown has not moved forward has not only been the perfect storm that I described, but also the lack of availability of finance. And I know full well that the reason it's taken Sonoma Mountain Village so long to get to where they're about to come back in with a new development plan, again, is financing. And if you talk to the people in Santa Rosa in terms of projects moving forward, financing, where's the money going to come from? So that's number one. Or sorry, number two. Third thing, legislation. The state legislature failed dismally at the end of the month of August in advancing pieces of legislation that would have assisted in the streamlining. So you, young Democrats, might want to talk to your Democratic people. We are, by the way, in a nonpartisan race here. You might want to talk to the Democratic majority legislature about how nothing got to the governor's desk this year. So as a member of the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, since I'm the MTC representative for Sonoma County in the nine cities, we have formed this financing authority thanks to a piece of legislation that David Chu got passed and signed last year. And we're going to be able to take advantage of monies available through the state and the region. And hopefully, as the financing authority gets up and going, some of these monies will become available to us in the city of Rona Park. But rest assured, the process is streamlined already.
Great, thank you. So now we'll move into our Q and A section of our program. So first off, so first off, we'll have one minute for each candidate to answer. And if you're interested in answering the question, since we won't be able to get to everyone with each question, probably do two candidates per question. Just please feel free to raise your hand, whether in the function of the Zoom or just raising your hand on your screen, and I'll get to you. First off, last year, the CASA compact caused a controversy among local governments in Sonoma County. What do the candidates think CASA got right? Where do they think it was off target? And what should the roles of the state and local governments be in housing decision-making? So if anyone's interested in answering this, just go ahead and raise your hand.
I've already raised my hand.
Okay, Jake, go ahead and answer it.
I was Chair of MTC when the CASA compact came forward for a vote. As Chair of that regional organization, I was in full support of that. That did not please my fellow council members. The effort to which I was referring in this year's legislature, these pieces of legislation were based on that compact and proposals that came through a very wide-ranging process. Clearly, as I expressed just a wee minute ago, I was not happy with the outcome of this legislative session. So obviously, from a point of view of local control versus state legislation, there are differences amongst various local government officials. But if you want to see an increase in housing built in this state, in this region, in this county, then you would have been well advised to support the CASA compact.
All right, anyone else want to take this question? Gerard?
Thanks. I think all of us will agree that we that we definitely have a housing shortage. And not all of us will agree where the problem started or part of the problem started. You have companies like Google and Apple and Salesforce that were given literally hundreds of millions of dollars in government subsidies to create jobs, but no such requirement to build housing. And so you saw a mass exodus from the city into the suburban areas, in particular in Sonoma County, where we don't have the type of economic vitality to support that. In other words, we're agriculture and we're tourism. We're not large insurance companies and tech companies, et cetera, et cetera. So the CASA compact did put forward a number of key, important pieces of legislation. And it's unfortunate that the state government did not act. However, there needs to be more local control over the implementation of those programs because a one fit, a one shoe that fits all solution does not work. The conditions in Hayward are different than the conditions in San Leandro, which are different than the conditions in Rona Park, et cetera. So if a local municipality is showing that it is doing its level best and is thinking outside the box to create housing and affordable housing, et cetera, we should be able to capture those monies and keep them at home rather than sending them to to other locations that aren't faring as well as Rona Park is. So so those are my comments with, you know, with regards to CASA.
Okay, thank you, Gerard. In the interest of time, I'm going to send each of the candidates all of the questions we've received in the Q and A, if you wish to answer them beyond this. But for now, we're going to move into every candidate's closing statements. And each candidate will have one minute to make a closing statement. So we'll start with Jackie, then Dave, then Jake, then Gerard, and we'll close with Willie. Jackie, you're muted.
Sorry about that. So the one thing that I will say is that we need to make a community that is accessible to our young people. Many of us have children here, and the way things are going, our children would not be able to afford living here. So we need to think about the next generation. So we need to think about the next generation, everyone, the next generation, not us. My, my husband and I, you know, we are union members. And we understand how hard it is for working class people, the everyday people goes to work and the everyday living, the real people are suffering with everything going. So when we talk about housing, for me, as a mother that is reading, uh, raising young children, I need to think about them. And also, we need to think that the people that we are talking about are actual people. They are human and we need to treat them with dignity and respect. So when we plan our affordable homes and everything, we also need to think about what we should do and what should we bring and everything to to the better of our community. Have a homeowner, I have a concern and I have to respect that from our, my other fellow homeowner. As a renter, we need to think about ways to protect those that right now can't afford rent, uh, the rent, can't afford to pay the mortgage. So in all of this, I'm, I am calling everyone to think about humanity, not us. Think about humanity and the people that we are trying to represent. I will stop there.
Thank you. Dave?
Uh, first, I'd like to thank Jen, uh, Jen H. uh, and uh, the Wine Country Democrats for having this forum. I wish I could have been on here a little longer, but I don't know what happened. For myself, I think the city has a good base as far as housing, and I think we can build off of that. Uh, the homelessness is a big situation that is not going to go away. So that's a, I mean, that's something that needs everybody's input. And it can't just be some people on the council, it can't be some people on the planning committee, it can't be just people in city government. It has to take more people, you need to get more people active. You know, if one thing can come out of all this, maybe we can get more people in the city of Runner Park to be more active in the city of Runner Park. You know, I grew up here in nineteen sixty-six. I was, I I was brought here by my parents. And this is an incredible, still an incredible place to live. It has its quirks and it has its things that need to be worked on. But where else would you rather have your kids raised? We have a park everywhere. So let's make that a dream for everybody. Let's make them see what Runner Park has. If it takes to build a little more affordable housing, let's get it, you know, work with the developers to get what we need to get. This is a great city. And what we can do is get people to get out and vote. Get out and vote. You know, everybody talks, but you have to vote. You pick the candidate that you like. Hopefully, it's me. But you get out and vote. I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jake?
Um, yeah, a closing statement. Uh, Gerard hit the nail on the head. Housing is a land use issue. You can't go out of the legal box. I'm sorry to tell y'all, but the state of California land use laws, the general plan of the city of Runner Park, which is our constitution for growth, these govern our actions. And as elected officials, we are bound to follow the law. We swear to uphold the stick constitution. So uh, in terms of the requirements of SEQA, in terms of zoning ordinances, in terms of how you adopt a specific plan, all of these things are legal issues and we have to work within that framework. Uh, the other thing obviously is, and this, and this is the great conundrum, is the social issue involved. And how do we deal with the complexity of a community the size of Runner Park? So I think that everybody needs to take a step back. Everybody needs to take a look. Gerard knows this full well as Chair of the Planning Commission, how we operate in the system of land use at this time. The new housing numbers will be coming down from the state to ABAG next year. Sorry to tell you, regional housing needs assessment. We're doing very well in meeting those, so we're doing our legal job. And the one word or phrase I haven't heard this evening is climate change. Gosh. Nobody has mentioned this in terms of moving forward as we build more houses and as more vehicle miles are traveled by the people who are going to be living in those houses. What are we going to do about the impact of climate change? And one of the things that I'm particularly interested in, as we update the general plan next year, is to have a climate change element and actually take some action in the city of Runner Park. We're the only city that didn't adopt the climate change resolution from the regional climate.
Your time is out.
Very much. I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, Gerard?
Thank you. Um, you know, housing is a basic human need. And it's tied into so many other issues like living wage, social and economic justice. And really, the net effect in Sonoma County and in other places is that we are eroding uh, the continuity of our community when we graduate our high school students and our.
Gerard, it appears you're frozen. Uh, we can come back to you. Let's come back to Gerard. Uh, Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for hosting this. Uh, as I said, I'm striving to represent the underrepresented side of Runner Park historic A and B section. Think of our Southwest Boulevard Plaza, think of Southwest Boulevard, think of the Southwest Wall. Why does it look like that? What we need here in Runner Park is livable, sustainable and walkable communities to ensure that we're reducing our omission. And what we need to do is grab our seat at the table and have our voices be heard. That is why I stood up and ran to represent District One. Yes, we live in a beautiful city, but some parts of our city are a little bit more beautiful than others. Why is that the case? As far as housing, we need to make sure that whatever we're doing, we need to ensure that we keep all our residents in mind just as we need to make sure that any improvements that are made in our city are being made in all parts of our city, starting with A and B section. As a, as a newcomer here, I ask you for your vote. Remember, it's your district, it's your vote and vote for Willie. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. We'll come back to you. Gerard, are you there? Gerard, can you hear me? I think you might be connected now, Gerard. Are you there? All right, um, if Gerard can come back on, we'll, we'll give him a moment. Otherwise, I'm gonna transfer it over to Director Jen Close to close us out. Still there? Yeah, Gerard or Jen?
We lost them all.
Gotta love technology. Gotta love technology.
Well, while we're waiting for them, I just want to say, since we're closing up here, um, I want to thank everyone here who was able to come tonight. Uh, please be sure to check our social media channels uh, to make sure to stay up to date on happenings in local housing. Uh, we'll be having a recording of today's webinar up on our YouTube channel by tomorrow. So please be sure to share that with anyone who wasn't able to join us tonight. Uh, and we just want to thank all of you who are on the call tonight, who have already joined Generation Housing uh, as members since our launch. Oh, great, Jen is here. So I'll hand it over to her.
There's Jen, Luke.
Hi, everybody. You guys, you are doing a great job. Luke's sorry, he's having a little tech problem. That's what happens when I have three computers going at the same time in the same house. But um, so thank you, Luke, for handout, for the handoff from Jen Close, Executive Director of Generation Housing. And I want to thank the candidates and everybody uh, who's been here. This is really important um, to hear from our candidates on these issues, on these housing issues. Um, you know, Jen H., we were born to to advocate for more, a more diverse and more affordable housing in Sonoma County. And we are a membership oriented, um, a membership driven organization. Um, we need uh, the folks behind us so that we have the power to advocate in the way uh, that folks need us to. So I am here to make the shameless ask that you join Jen H. And you can just go to our website, generation dot generationhousing.org and you can join, you can join it at a level comfortable to you. We just want you to be a member so you can stay in touch. Um, if you join for fifty bucks, you get one of these great t-shirts that Luke and I are modeling tonight. Um, but we want you at at any level, um, because we need you involved, um, so that we can all uh, make sure that we have the housing we need in Sonoma County. So that's, that's my pitch. And thank you, everybody, again, for coming. Take care and don't forget.
Thanks for all your work and Generation Housing. Well done.
I'm, I'm sorry that my uh, session timed out there. I I apologize.
No worries.
Yeah, anyway, Gerard.
Are there any last words you'd like to say, Gerard?
Only that it'll be very curious to see what happens after the twenty twenty census is tabulated as it relates to the uh, updating of the general plan. And I think that will be very revealing and give us a unique opportunity to really put some teeth into that section on environmental justice and really take the deep dive and see what we can do for creating more affordable housing and mitigate other uh, uh, conditions that exist in our disadvantaged communities.
Great. Thank you so much. Uh, and thank you all once again for joining us tonight. Uh, we hope this has been an informative experience for everyone. Uh, we look forward to seeing you all soon. In the meantime, uh, stay safe and be well. Thank you again and have a good night.
Nice job, moderator. Well done.
Take care.
Thank you.